Go. Ready?
You are live.
Awesome, thank you. All right, welcome town of Groveland. This is the planning board meeting Tuesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-five, seven P M.
October.
October, wow. October seventh, twenty twenty-five, seven P M. at Town Hall. Our agenda tonight is pleasantly light.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Sure, sure.
All right. First agenda item to review the comprehensive plan, comprehensive master plan. Comprehensive, not the master plan. And just review the adopted comprehensive plan and take inventory of ongoing goals, responsible parties, and track progress.
And it appears this is a public meeting.
I think John just kind of puts, it's not a. Not a public.
I see, okay, all right, understood. Oh, all right, all right, all right, right. See, this is good.
Get me. I did the same thing a couple of meetings ago, I was like, oh, a public meeting, and I was like, wait, is it a public hearing? Public hearing is.
Yes.
So, thank you. All right. Last meeting, we brought this up.
You were not here.
I was not here last time. I missed you too.
It was like a, yeah.
I missed you too. Yeah, I was in New Jersey.
You missed us.
So, I'm sure because of. That you weren't able to make it, you probably already read through the meeting minutes and you're all caught up. And you've already read through all of this and have all of your feedback, correct?
Uh, yes, I brushed, I brushed off on it when I saw the agenda. But I do, I'm going through this at length as well when we were going through the master plan process.
Yes, you were part of that, yes.
Perhaps the best way to proceed through this is to take this nice pamphlet put together by Jonathan that reviews specific things to the planning board's points. And really does guide us in a, in a not one hundred and sixty-four page way. As to what we could be, what we could be doing to implement this plan.
That sounds good to me. You didn't, you don't want me to go page by page, read through this?
I mean, you know, I got hours to spare, but the public doesn't. We've got, we've got a member of the Groveland public here, and I don't think he wants to be here until four in the morning.
No. All right, so on. The doc in front of you, John has put together so kindly, appreciate it, John. The, all of the bullets or agenda items on here that are grayed out would show what the planning board would, would take part in as a, as a responsible party.
Hey, and Jonathan, is this, is this available on the, on the public stuff as well?
Um, it's in the plan.
Oh.
The actual sheet is not.
Okay.
But there's like a more comprehensive version of this in.
In the plan itself, which is available at grovelandtownma dot documents hyphen on hyphen demand dot com. There's a wealth of information for the public. And, and it is the, you'll see agenda minutes, you'll see plenty, you'll see many minutes, agendas, documents that are referred to. You can definitely see the comprehensive plan, that's certainly up there as well. Anything you're looking for, that's the best first place to look. And we should probably like have something highlighting that website because it's, I don't know if there's a link on the main town page for it. Maybe there is.
I think you have to click agenda, agendas and minutes, maybe?
Yeah, it, it, I mean, but it's more than just agendas and minutes, it's like, pretty comprehensive. I took a look at it earlier today and it was, I was very surprised about how many different things you can find and how much information's out there, so. People of Groveland, that's a good spot.
Yeah, I mean.
Well said.
Yeah, kudos to you guys for making sure everything's up there, right?
Hundred percent.
Not just our minutes, but all of the other boards that we're on as well, those minutes, all the connect, all the links to any type of project that's going on through the town, they're, they're all available online, so. If someone needs to come in and request a copy of something because they're not able to view things online, you do, you know, these phones are pretty small. Or if you have a laptop and you're not sure how to get to it, can always come in and be printed out as for accessibility as well. So. Uh, we can kind of go through. Some of these quick ones, we just kind of. Good, number zero, where is zero? Appoint a comprehensive plan and implementation committee. We kind of just do that throughout the whole board, right? That we kind of work on that as a, as a team. Whole board works as a committee.
As well as a select board in the E D P C D.
Yep. Exactly. E D P C D, economic development.
Planning Conservation Department.
Okay, wow. That's what that is, all right? I was like, is there another board that I'm not aware of? Cool. Enhance Elm Square. And the pines. The. Planning Board's on there, we already know the CPC has some projects that are in there for Elm Square. I think the Historic Committee is trying to create it as a historic. I believe. Owners of the gas station with the post office, yep. Conversations have been had, will have, that's to be determined, we do have a new restaurant down there. There is a, and I'm looking at one point six. For those of you might be at home. We did approve the gas station to become a business, so once that owner is, or the leasing starts moving forward, that should be, that should be dressed up and, and start, begin to look nice. And that is kind of a gateway into, into town, coming over the bridge from April. Move forward and recommendations of the land study at Elm Square. Post office, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think we'd all love to have a little sitting area right there on the, at the corner, be able to look over the river, but we'll, we'll, to be determined. Costs, that all costs money to buy property.
One thing that is happening is the Merrimack River Trail is being enhanced over the next year or two. And that is a trail that, as it's, as it sounds, is right on the river. We're working to get, you know, some seating areas and some things like that, clean it up a little bit. It is, it adjoins, or is very close to Groveland Commons. And so this is something that sort of kind of fits in that umbrella a little bit. But is, it definitely will be an add to the concept of enhancing the area by the river.
Chris, anything?
Uh, no, I'm not, I think this, all this stuff so far.
Cool.
I'm also excited for some of this stuff to kind of get, get some momentum, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. It's, it is, it's good to see that a lot of the things that are in here are things that we have spoken about. I mean, you're, you're on multiple boards, you're on multiple boards, I'm on multiple boards, that we've, these conversations have been had about these and everybody has everybody. It's in, fresh in everybody's mind regularly, so.
Agree.
Valley Screw. That, it kind of goes, links up to one fifty Cent Street, we know that. That's an ongoing process, we did put out the, that R F P. We had zero interest, right, on, on ideas.
Right.
Because we have to work on the zoning. Right, it's, right now, it's industrial only, we, in order to do that, there's the conversations around changing that zoning to be residential as well. In order to have a builder come in. Or really have any type of interest in there, there has to be a give and take and not just an industrial, large industrial park, so.
Well, the plant, the, the item says that it's supposed to accommodate the mix of uses, so I mean.
Right.
That goes, that goes exactly to, hey, the zoning needs to change if it's only, if it's only situated for one use. So is that, is that a, is that a, your board, a zoning board kind of thing?
Uh, no, I think that, I think that would be us and a select board, I believe, the zoning board really just enforces the existing zoning or hears appeals based on the existing zoning.
Okay.
But that's something that Rebecca would have to put, put forth. And I don't, I don't know if that's the plan for next year or not, I don't, I don't know where that stands, but I know it's a.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a thought process, and whoa, how we're going to approach it.
Jonathan looks like he's about to say something.
Yeah, I think it's in progress, I think what has happened is, you know, it's presented to the board, you guys review it, you vote on it. And then if it passes, it goes to the select board.
Apologies, I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. So I think what happens is it's in progress, the change in zoning, the planning board would have to approve it, and then it would go to the select board.
Do you have any concept about the timing of?
I don't know.
No, it's fair.
And in addition, just as far as optics go for that site, I don't think anyone in town would like to see that just continue to be industrial anyways.
Yeah.
Even, even aside from what we had planned through the comprehensive master plan, just because, you know, why look what happened there in the first place as an industrial site and then put another industrial place in the same spot?
No, for sure.
Knowing what happened.
It's not like industrial businesses are clamoring to open up new shops. But also, you know, I mean, your, your point's super well taken. If it becomes a superfund site or, you know, the, the federal, federal government gets involved, it makes it a lot more thorny to, you know, to either mitigate the problems that are there or make it used for something else.
Or, or just being that close to the aquifer, yeah, I think we'd, you know, take that out of the equation anyways.
Hundred percent.
And that, that ties in, one fifty Cent Street also ties in with the Valley Screw building itself. Which is a whole nother process that is being worked on, it's not, it's not owned by us right now, it's condemned, that is a kind of a nightmare, so. Has to be, that's being worked.
And it's, and, and it sounds like, at least from what I've heard, that, you know, multiple people from multiple, you know, boards and committees, certainly Rebecca's involved as well. Like, a lot of folks in town are, are working on this issue from different angles, as I understand it.
And again, to your point, online, there is a lot of information on there and, and more, a lot more detail than what we're speaking about. And if there's any other questions on any of these items, feel free to reach out to myself. Or, or anyone in the town, in the Town Hall, that are more than willing to help out and give you information, so. One fifty Cent Street, we talked about that. A hydrologist, hydrologist. A lot of stuff here. Support redevelopment, Washington Street.
Yeah, but I was seeing some of that stuff, like anytime we hire, bring in a specialist, I think that would be a big process through the town administrator's office to.
Well, it's a little bit like a cart-horse thing, right? So you can't really, I mean, planning doesn't make a lot of sense until you get sort of sign off from the federal government that you're good to do, you know, work with the area. Because the area is the black mark that's preventing the developers from coming in, along with, you know, the thing, so it's kind of like, there's a, there's an A to B to C to D process, you can't start at E. So we're, again, good people are working on this, there should be, with, with the good communications happening between boards now, you know, I think, I think you'll, I think you'll hear things in the coming months, you know, about the progress that gets made.
And we have John now too, so.
Exactly so.
Washington Street, existing zoning, consider whether the limited, limited business district should be expanded. Have to look into that one further, I haven't, I haven't seen that one come up yet, the specific land use stuff.
It hasn't, it hasn't been like a hot button.
Yeah, I haven't seen that one.
But maybe it ties in with, you know, the Valley Screw problem and Starry Fields too, because you're looking at the two fourteen, for example.
Yep, and that did cause it out of the next sub-bullet for zoning bylaws, or Valley Screw one fifty, Washington.
Yeah.
Zoning around ninety-seven, Route ninety-seven and Salem Street to Bagnall. Value with the current zoning along the corridor and identify changes created incentives for mixed-use development, enhance the gateway, such as small-scale commercial, retail, restaurant, up to dining.
Yeah, I think, that makes sense.
Well, the, and, and the businesses that are there now seem to be doing well. There are always lines at the coffee place, Fadi's gas station is getting good, is getting good traffic, you know, the, you know, Pub ninety-seven is, seems to be somewhat reborn, I mean, so you're looking at.
Yeah, that's packed every night.
This corridor is, you know, got a ton of traffic, and so there are a lot of people who are hungry and want to shop and want to, you know, you know, get their stuff to, close to home. It seems, it seems like an opportunity that should, should be capitalized upon.
Yeah, there's a new development going next to Groveland Gas, that area was all cleared out.
Is that like a storage?
I think that was the, that's the storage, the multi-use.
Yeah, yeah, contractor base.
So it's like, yeah, contractor base where people can rent the space out and, and use it.
Yeah, they came, they came before us.
But to your earlier point about, you know, the gas station, same thing, right? If we can ta, take one of our entrances to the town or gateways to the town, make it attractive for businesses and, you know, to revitalize, it doesn't necessarily need to be revitalized on that side, but if we, if we can make it more attractive to bring businesses in, then we'll both attract people from out of town and give people in-town resources to utilize within town.
Yeah.
Which I'll bring to your venue. Create a significant gateway to Groveland, yep, that's, we just talked about. A lot of this stuff is at a high level, and then it gets into the nitty-gritty details. So please feel free to look through and. Industrial zone, we just talked about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of the items that overlap each other as well, like one overlaps two, overlaps three, then, you know, because they're all, to a large extent, especially within the sections, they're all kind of tied into each other.
Neighborhoods, I'm on four one. Preserve and enhance existing smaller scale neighborhoods and protect open space and natural resources. I think that. Good example is when we were looking at the M B T A zoning.
Yeah.
And I've honed in on that and the Innis Associates was very helpful and that was always on our mind, right? Like, try to keep that, protect the neighborhoods and that, and not just, hey, let's, whatever area we want to make three families or whatever, to keep that small-town feel.
Yeah, a hundred percent, and I mean, the, you know, looking back at the different options that were presented, I think the, the one that we selected was the strongest in enhancing goal number four versus the other options. And so, you know, again, like, it's nice to check your work and make sure that, you know, you're not just unnecessarily patting yourself on the back, but, you know, this is the re, you know, this is one of the reasons or the guiding, guiding principles behind taking, you know, the Salem Street idea instead of some of the other spots.
Yeah, and I think just as, as well as that, you even have the entire comprehensive master plan idea, aside from, you know, you know, sidestepping the M B T A stuff, was, you know, putting stuff in place for future planning for the town, so we don't get cored into.
Right.
A development here that we don't want, you know, as a community, or, you know, you know, all of a sudden we're below our threshold for forty B and now we have another forty B coming at us, right? So the more we can plan for that, the more we can stay in front of it as a, as a community, we can do our, do that planning and make sure we keep the town looking the way we want to keep the town, while we're also continuing to meet the guidelines as outlined by the state.
Yeah, and I mean, this is, you know, again, these, a lot of these things go hand in hand. And so when the town gets really mad about the proposed Garrison Street project and says, you know, what do you do in planning board? The planning board, you know, can come back and say, hey, listen, we're trying to make it so that we can, we can reject plans like this because we have the requisite, you know. The requisite footprint and, you know, we meet all the regs that allow us to be able to not, you know, to allow us to fight a, you know, a forty B or something along those lines. So, again, you know, trying to advance the goal of protecting, you know, small areas and whatnot.
And, Chris, I don't know how long you've been in town, I'm, you and I are fairly new to town.
Right.
I've been about nine years.
Yeah, and the fact, I, I hope the citizens at home know that we are, even being new, we want to keep that small-town feel.
Exactly.
And we're, we're the ones that are here, we're on the boards, and we want to keep that as long as possible, so.
Well, you know, and the thing is, you, you know, and you, you mentioned it, we serve on multiple boards, we see people in town and they beat the same drum, and that these, you know, it gets pretty clear what Groveland wants, you know, and so, yes, yes, some development is appropriate and whatnot, but protecting sort of the small-town feel is something that it comes to, it comes to light pretty much every time we have a hearing. You know, and it, and sometimes it's in like a micro, you know, version, right? So I don't like that this person across the street is building this development, right? And it could be, hey, listen, the development's not that much, or, you know, or, yeah, you know, they could probably make it, make it more, you know, conforming with town. And you see the interplay between that stuff. And, and so, you know, DJ's point's a hundred percent on, even though we're fairly new relative to some of the people in town, we, we've got our finger on the pulse of both this plan and what the folks tell us when they come, when they come, come to the meetings, come say, say your piece, get online and get on the Zoom, you know, and, and, you know, make yourself heard. We are interested in what you have to say, and it matters, so.
And we do it all within our legal limits.
A hundred percent.
You know, that's the other aspect, right?
Yeah.
We can't just make a determination just because we said so.
Oh, I hate that, that's right. The legal word for that is arbitrary. And, but yeah, it's because I say so, and, you know, that's, that's not how, that's not how this board, as we sit here today, thinks and feels about this.
And again, like I said, in the best way to make sure we are preserving that community that we want, that we all moved here for, or continue to live here for, is to make sure we're planning for that year down the road, right? You know, so if we can look at what's, what we know will be coming four, five, seven, ten years down the road, and know that we need to put these plans in place so that when stuff does change, or that something comes down the pipe that we know is going to be coming at some point, we already have a plan in place to make sure we mitigate it as best we can, or put it in place the way that benefits the town.
And, sorry, and I'll, I'll finish, but the, the M B T A situation was, was exactly the, you know, the perfect example of that. I think for a year, the planning board was signaling to town, hey, listen, people in town, this is something we're going to have to do. And when it came to town meeting, and we sat down at town meeting, and I expected a groundswell of opposition to, to, you know, to try and comply with M B T A. And it didn't materialize because the messaging had gotten out so appropriately, and some other towns really got hammered by not, by not being in compliance, that you, you know, there, there are numerous towns that are having problems because they didn't do the things that we did, and.
They're going through it.
Exact, exactly so, and, and, you know, so we've conserved resources that are sparse, we've enhanced what the state provides us, and we've kept ourselves in a position where in the future, we're, we're going to be advantaged versus some of these other communities that weren't able to link their government with their citizens. And so that everybody kind of understands, stood, that, you know, that these are things that are important, so credit to the people of Groveland for, you know, showing up and, and, you know, understanding that at the end of the day, you know, these things are in the best interest of all of us, so.
And we, we want, I mean, I would have wanted to fight, but it wasn't in our best interest, it wouldn't have, that we would have, keep the towns that are still going through it.
Right.
You, financially, you need to be able to support that fight, and that is a difficult way of, way of life to try to produce that kind of money to continue to fight and fight and fight. You've got to pay for it.
Well.
We're all paying for it, and to say, we have a pretty good handle on things right now, we think that we have what we need to do to bring community and state together and work. Does everyone, did everybody agree with it? No, absolutely not.
Sure.
It just, but I think we did, I think we got that accomplished, and it's, it's a.
And the want to fight versus the understanding, you know, what the likelihood of success of that fight is, or the cost of that fight, or the duration of that fight, and, you know, all those things that go into, does it make sense to have, you know, to draw a line with the state? And, you know, that's why, you know, we came out on one side because we weighed all these various things and we looked at what was happening all around, we paid attention to the other things that happened, we didn't make snap decisions, we waited to see some things go down the pipe and see how things turned out, so it was a reasoned, you know, reasoned suggestion based on the evidence that we had in front of us. It wasn't just some willy-nilly thing where we think so, it wasn't because we said so. We made it, made a recommendation based on facts and evidence supported with, you know, several communities and what we'd seen, you know, so it was, it's different than trying to force something that you don't want on you because we say so, right? You know, and, and that's, that is really the thing.
Did you have anything else?
Nope. Sorry, that got.
No, you're good, it's, it's a good conversation, because we don't get to have this often, usually we have agenda items that we have to just kind of work through.
Sure.
The next one on four two, I just wanted to, I wanted to call out real quick because it's the affordable housing, the Housing Production Plan, Affordable Housing, that's one of the things that we're doing right now in the CPC, is getting the funding in order to create that, that bank, I think, bank account, basically, I think it's a bank account. In order to be used, to be able to use those funds, at the last Town Hall meeting, we appro, we voted to create that fund, I think, so now we're, we, and we can start helping the seniors, first-time home buyers, things like that, to be able to use the fund, that when the sub, the sub, a lot of this, how's the, the money that comes in there is with the subdivisions that come before us. And in lieu of having affordable housing, they pay into that fund and we can use it for that affordable housing program, right? And we haven't been able to use that money yet, and now we're, we're in the process of doing that, so.
Right.
Another, another good one.
Yeah, and just even, you're looking back in the last year, the progress from then to now is, you know, you can see the ball moving, and that's, that's encouraging, because there was a duration where it didn't, and, you know, so. Across. All of the boards that, you know, that I, that I'm aware of in town, everybody is trying to move and swim in the same direction now, and so you're seeing, you're seeing the fruits of that effort, and, and stay tuned, because, because, you know, we should be, we should be through on that pretty soon.
Centers to regain agricultural uses. That's all zoning stuff, right, consider the right to farm by law.
I haven't heard a lot about that.
I have not heard that as well. Sadly, I think we're losing a farm as well. More zoning, wildlife corridors for open space, all of the state stuff, town-wide strategies, four fifteen. Develop community-wide branding program for signers that include new gateway signs, historic resources, directional signs, I know that, again, CPC is already doing that with anything, any new project, we just developed some signs. They voted on that last night, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had to leave early. But we have now some signage that'll go on our, these projects from the CPC that are being built, and they'll say, hey, this is, you know, this is what the town is getting for their money, the CPC money that we pay, that we pay into, this is what we are supporting. I think the sign, there's already some nice signage that are coming in.
Sure.
To Groveland.
Which is fairly recent too.
Yeah. Community trail, you're working on, there's, there's other, the signage and things that are benches, things like that.
Right, signage, additional, additional infrastructure, all that sort of stuff, that is coming on board, we're working on that. That is a continuing project that may, may or not, may or may not be re-submitted to be a little bit larger next year for some, you know, based on some quotes that have come in, but, but again, enhancing the trail network is something that is, you know, plasters all, all throughout this ma, this master plan, and it's something that we're working on, you know, with good diligence.
Yeah, public park, right here next door, we get the skate park going in.
Yeah, the pines, a lot has happened to the pines in the past couple of years, the pickleball courts, everybody loves the pickleball courts.
Public parking, we expanded, you know, to help, the last annual meeting, we voted to expand that public parking over into where the water department is, to have that public parking, that's a thousand feet or, I think you'd up to a thousand feet now, so that allows businesses to.
Utilize it.
Utilize that and not restrict them saying, okay, we don't have enough public parking to be able to open up another business down there.
Absolutely.
Hey, Jonathan, you want to put, put in your point about that, that new parking, the new parking on the, at the end of the rail trail?
Oh, yeah. I don't know if. How much I can say to.
Oh, okay, all right, well, we can, we can table that.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine, but more, more and better access is something that is in the works and moving forward, and the good people of town are working on it from several different angles, and we're having, we're having some really good results that we'll be able to share soon.
I think, I think that would be widely praised on, for that, for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. All right. So we're good there, thank you for all that, appreciate all that. Design guidelines, review and adoption. So this is about the multifamily housing design guidelines, the review and possibly a vote to adopt the, adopt the draft of the multifamily housing guidelines, which just supports that the future Salem Street multifamily overlay district that we just talked about.
Sure.
And provided any advisory standards for building scale orientation, architectural express, expression and site layout. Any, so that's, last meeting, we had gotten a packet, and that was kind of all laid out in there, and we were giving. The board time to read through it and have any feedback. We do have. Two, three members that are not here as well. This is not a timeline sensitive topic, so did you have any feedback, comments, concerns, questions or anything?
I mean, so I remember from the last meeting that there was some talk about putting in restrictions as to flat roofs, and what I had thought, and what I continue to think, is. And what I had thought and what I continue to think is the, and I reread the, the plan in the, in the time between the last meeting and the, the plan talks in several ways about how flat roofs would be discouraged. Of course, one of the, one of the types of buildings is a tri, a triplex and shows a flat roof, so, I mean, you know, but, but to me, I think it's very important that we don't restrict things out of hand. You know, I would rather retain the the discretion to look at a project and say, okay, is this a project that, you know, maybe needs a flat roof uniquely, you know, for any number of reasons? And even in the plan, they talked about when you have flat roofs, there are other things you need to do, like you can't have visible condensers and things like that. You have to like do ergonomic design to, you know, minimize the footprint of these sort of things or whatever. Like say you had lead devices on top of a roof and, you know, like whatever, but the, but the point of the matter to me was, they said in several different places, this was going to be discouraged and, you know, you should do this instead. I thought, I thought that that was sufficient and, you know, to me, reviewing the, the the, the guidelines, I thought they, I thought they were excellently done. So I, I would be, you know, I'm fine with waiting until, until we have maybe another member or two, you know, to, you know, finalize them and I agree that there's no deadline to it, but I didn't see anything in there that was red flaggy. I thought it was done really well.
Say, I, I agree a hundred percent. My, after review, I didn't see anything that really jumped out at me, but I agree. I think, yeah, a more complete board might be apropos for, for a call to a vote.
You go with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Awesome. All right, so we will continue that discussion next meeting as well, so we can make, we have an agenda item.
Do you want to ask the member of town if he has anything to talk about?
I, well, we know you're here to just kind of, well, follow through, do you have, you have any comments? I don't even know if there's a mic up there.
There is.
Oh, there is, okay, good.
Might have to turn it on.
Say your name and where you're from.
Brian Canizaro, Groveland Commons Way. My question really isn't part of the agenda, it's kind of outside of it, but I will pose the question to you now and that would simply be the Water and Sewer Group is planning on constructing a new building on some property in town. I know they've, they have identified three. My question to the planning board is, is when the time comes that they start that process, do they have to come before you to submit the plans, meet any guidelines that you would normally guide them on as pertains to any other buildings that go on? Things of that nature.
That's a great question. I, I would have to assume they would.
I, I would think they would as part of
But I want to say it's a definite yes, but I would have to assume they would, but I'll find that out for you.
Okay, no, because, because the reason why I'm asking is kind of a biased question and that is, is my understanding that two of the properties they're looking at is one down by well three, which is in the pines. Yes, and the other one is supposedly the lot behind this building. And I think everybody can pretty much be assured that to go behind the building, that's going to be a pretty good fight. Simply because I believe that was earmarked to the senior center and they're kind of planning on that. Plus, the type of building they're putting up probably wouldn't fit in there. So the people that are in the housing behind it may not like it, you know, just conditions like that. But at the same time, they're being told by their engineering team because of the flood mapping and they're guesstimating what it would be down the road. Down by the pines might be a problem. So they got all these little dynamics running around in the background and I'm getting in my own head where I was, okay, that must come before, I mean, the water department doesn't just have carte blanche, it says, you know, the selectmen say, yeah, you can have that piece of property and bang, it goes. It must come before you guys to get some sort of approvals.
I would imagine that that's true. I would suspect that that's true. There may be some rule of which we're not aware that, you know, maybe there's some special thing because it's a water resource or something along those lines, but I wouldn't suspect that to be the case. And, you know, so it is, it is wise and smart to bring issues out in the forefront rather than waiting for things to be sprung upon you, right? So it's good to hear this, that, you know, this is the kind of thing that is being discussed and bandied about, right? But I think what I feel very comfortable in saying is that, you know, before people start putting, you know, shovels in the ground, the select board's certainly going to be consulted, so there'll definitely be some select board public interaction, right, for sure. Because nothing, nothing gets done without select board approval. And I would be, you know, very confident that the planning board would have a role as well, at least in reviewing things, maybe not, maybe they don't have, maybe we don't have a final say on, on a particular thing, but we would certainly have an opportunity to review and submit guidance to the select board. I can't imagine that there'd be a circumstance under which such an important building in town.
I, I can't see us not having, having part of it.
Hey Jonathan, can you check?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can definitively say at the next meeting, hey, by the way, these are the rules, this is what it is and this is what we do.
I was going to ask.
Yeah, I, I assume that if it is a site plan, if it comes in as a site plan, you will, you would review it, but I can triple check for you.
It would be good to have, to come back and be able to say at the next meeting, hey, remember the gentleman that came in town last time? You know, this is the answer, one hundred percent definitively.
Yeah, I mean, we, engineering would have to be involved and everything else, so I, I have to assume that it's definitely going through, through here.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you for the heads up.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Appreciate that heads up.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, I presume the select board, we need to have a hearing about allocating the land and all that kind of stuff.
Awesome. You guys have anything else?
Are we able to approve the minutes, just you and me?
Yeah, we have, we have, this is a, we're a
Well, Chris wasn't here.
How do you know that? If he's allowed? Because he wasn't here and he wasn't part of the meeting, the meeting, can he accept, can we accept the minutes?
Isn't there that one rule?
I think, I think I can sign the thing, I think I watched it online and
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mullins.
Mullins, yeah.
Get a Mullins in, okay.
Okay.
Are you, but you have to do it prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I have not signed the Mullins yet.
Okay, so we just, we'll ta, we'll table it till next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, if you're not Mullins, you'd have to be Mullins and already to be caught up. All right, town planner update?
Yeah, so I have three updates. The first one kind of goes back to our initial conversation about the plans being located on the web, the town's webpage. So I, I was talking to the town administrator about this and we both agreed that it would make more sense if all of like the, the comprehensive plan, the housing plan, the design guidelines, they were all on the department's webpage, the Economic Development, Planning and Conservation Department webpage. Because they're currently under grants and projects. Which really isn't straightforward if, if you were like going to the website and you were aiming to look for that, so.
Is there a way to link them around so that like, if you get, if you are looking from, from like the wrong place?
Yeah.
Like, like a hot link to it?
Yep, we can do that. Or house it in multiple locations too, so. The only issue with that is, you know, if, if one version is updated, we might forget to update another.
So maybe links are the best way to do that, so that everything links to the place where you put it and then when it's updated, then the links won't, you know, be bad.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
All right, awesome.
And then the second thing is currently the, all of our files in the department are on OneDrive, I believe, and we are transferring all of that to SharePoint. So like the property files, templates, everything that, all of these agendas, so that's all going to be like in the cloud and, and SharePoint. And the third thing is the planning board's website has been updated to reflect Patrick as the vice chair of the board, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. The SharePoint, is that, when is that going to take effect?
So the property file folder will be moved over first and that's going to take place this Friday, so.
So does everything still get access through the Groveland Town Done Mass documents on demand? It's just a different?
Oh, yeah. So this is internal, internal.
Oh, anything, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
That sparked my memory. Is it, is it called MyMap that's on there? Is that what that's called?
MyMap is available on our website. That's through the MVPC, Mayor Mac Valley Planning Commission, and that's like the mapping, the mapping tool, the GIS.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't working. I knew it wasn't working. I thought it said there was an update. I went to go, I had to go through like the state website or something like that.
Was it on the department's webpage?
I think it was the town. It said something that needed to be updated or something like that. I can, I can look at it. I didn't do any research prior to coming in, but I thought it was an update that we had to do or something like that, but I'll take a look.
Okay.
Random, just thought, came to my head. Any other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting?
I have none. None.
Nothing from you, John?
Nope.
Okay, and I have none as well. Next meeting. So we can do tentatively the twenty first? Typically we'll be meeting on the twenty first. As of right now, we'll, we'll just do it on the twenty first. We have the
Design.
Family housing stuff we have to go over and then we can assign, we can approve the minutes from this meeting and last meeting as well, so we can do the last two. If we're having a difficult time getting people, we can always bump it out unless there's something that, but I'd like to, I always like to keep it on in case something comes in that, that gets filed that we need to review, right? So it's always, it's always best to, so we'll do October twenty first.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Seven PM.
Chris, you good?
Yep, I'm good.
Great.
Putting it in my calendar right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion, motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Planning board meeting Tuesday, October seventh at seven forty one, meeting adjourned. Thank you, Tom Groveland. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Good luck, guys. Thank you.
Yeah.
We tried the best we can, right?
Yeah.
This is, I think, that's, that's all it is.
Are we good?
No, we're not, probably not, because we're still on the Zoom. And we're out.